To thank again Dr. Kyler Wallstrom from the University of Minnesota College of Education and Human Development and Julie Dahl from the Minnesota Sleep Society. Both of them shared presentations earlier this evening and research on school start times. And we'll be sharing more details later this evening during the board meeting also that are specific to Stillwater. Yesterday I attended with Director Hepner and our team from the district Reimagine Minnesota. We're starting to work on the strategies, nine strategies that have been developed by metro districts to increase achievement for all students. And we focused yesterday on learning about three strategies. The first was recruiting and retaining staff of color. The second, amplifying student voice. And the third, creating policies to support student achievement and growth. And it was a great conversation where we had time to learn from other districts and engage in learning about what they were doing to support those three strategies. We'll be meeting monthly and we'll continue that work through this year and next year. Unfortunately, all too familiar to most of us is the gun violence and the impact on schools and communities that we've heard of as of late. Many folks are reaching out similar to when we had mental health concerns last fall. We are partnering with Washington County and the local police. And we have in place within our school district emergency response plans, building emergency response plans, and prevention plans. But we'll be continuing to work on this and are going to be meeting with a group of parents on Tuesday and community members who are reaching out to help support us in these efforts. After that, we'll have more information that we'll bring back to the board and others who might be interested in helping learn more about school safety within our school district. In relation to that, we are also working as our students and students across the country engage in their First Amendment rights. On March 14th, there's a national lockout planned in support of gun safety and eliminating violence within schools. At 10 o'clock, our high school administration will be working with our student councils to provide safe environments for our students where they can exercise their voice but also remain in a safe place. We really appreciate the openness and responsiveness of our student council in planning for this important activity. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the introductory items. We have the student report and Ava and Annabelle are here, so who would like to go first?
I'll start tonight. My name is Ava Okanovich and I'll be giving an update regarding sports and activities going on at the high school. Winter sports have been wrapping up since the last meeting. The girls' basketball team had their last game of the season in the section semifinal against Woodbury. And the boys' team followed suit in their quarterfinal game against Creighton just last night. Last week, the season for the boys' hockey team ended with a 1-3 loss to Hill Murray. The boys' swim and dive team took first place in the section and competed in the state meet during the first three days of March. The wrestling team won the section title and made it to the state competition as well. Spring sports are right around the corner. Girls and boys' track and field practices start on Monday, March 12th. Captains practices have been taking place throughout the week. All athletes must be eligible to participate by signing up on Fee Pay. Aside from sports, the 73 musicians who are part of Stillwater's concert orchestra are going on tour to St. Louis, Missouri. The musicians left early this morning and will return on Sunday afternoon. They will perform their music, visit museums, and explore the university in Missouri between 18 total hours of driving on their bus. In other news, student council met this week to sort through blast week grants that were received from teachers and staff. The council is excited to fund things like senior signing day, Avid activities, and miscellaneous educational gadgets for classrooms. The 2018 prom dress resale event will be taking place on Saturday, March 10th, from 10:30 to 1 o'clock in the high school's wrestling gym. Students have been bringing in their dresses to sell throughout the week. It will cost $5 to enter and only cash must be used for purchases. All of the money received in payment for dresses will be returned to the seller. The prom committee has worked hard to make this event a success. The 2018 junior and senior prom will take place on Saturday, May 5th, at the Myth Event Center from 7:30 to 11:30. Tickets will be $40 starting on April 16th and the price will increase by $10 each week. There will be a 9th and 10th grade formal at the Stillwater Pony and Activity Center on Friday, April 27th, from 7:30 to 11:00 p.m. Tickets will be on sale starting on April 9th. Ticket sales for both these events will be through Fee Pay this year. Tickets are currently on sale for the Stillwater Area High School's spring musical production of Bye Bye Birdie. There's actually a pit performance going on, a rehearsal for the musicians that will play in the pit below. The performances will be on Friday, April 6th at 7:00 p.m., Saturday, the 7th, at 2:00 and 7:00 p.m., and on Sunday, April 8th, at 2:00 p.m. Tickets must be purchased on the new online ticketing website at www.showtics4u.com. This new online ticketing site will be used for all fine arts events. Finally, students have been registering to prove their knowledge on AP tests in May. Students can sign up for their test through total registration. March 18th is the last day to register. That's all I have now for Annabelle.
Thank you.
My name is Annabelle Gregg and I'm excited to share with you an update about the academics at SAHS. Students and staff find themselves in a busy but very exciting point in the year. As quarter three wraps up on March 15th, students and staff are working hard inside and outside the classroom. AP Calculus students approach their final chapter before they begin to prepare for the AP exam. AP Environmental Science classes tapped maple trees today around the SAHS campus and will allow the bags to fill over spring break. Government classes have been learning about their Minnesota voting laws in comparison to other states like Indiana, while AP government classes are learning about the Supreme Court. U.S. History classes are expanding their knowledge on World War II and assembling decades projects. In Global Studies, freshmen are learning about the work and life of Gandhi. Enriched English classes are wrapping up with the novel Poison Woodpebble by Barbara Kingsolver. Some of our freshman and senior English classes are exploring the world of Shakespeare as well. AP Biology students are learning about respiration and photosynthesis while Anatomy students just finished a cat dissection. As you can see, high school students are busy at work preparing for the end of quarter three. As quarter four begins, it can be assured that students will be expanding their study times for AP exams, finals, and ACT, all while building excitement for the warmer weather that is quickly approaching. And lastly, as spring break approaches, there are lots of exciting conversations filling the halls. Some of our students, especially seniors and juniors, have plans to go visit post-secondary institutions, while others may be taking a very well-deserved break at home or perhaps on a beach. Forty-three students from the high school will be heading to Choberna, Mexico, for the very popular and annual Trinity Lutheran Mission trip. Here, they'll be constructing roofs for impoverished people, and for many students on the trip, they'll be expanding their Spanish language knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Exciting times at the high school. Next is district recognitions and up first is the state champion gymnastics team.
All right. We'd like to invite Dusty Dennis and Joan Ledson and the girls' gymnastics team to come forward. I see many of them in the back there. Come on forward. The team won the class two-way state championship. We're really proud of their efforts and we'd love to have you share a little bit about your season. Do you mind starting by introducing yourselves and telling us about your grade you're in?
You draw the short straw.
Sorry, will you say that again?
Tell us your name and what grade you're in.
I'm Danielle Karen and I'm a senior.
How about what events you compete on?
I do all of them.
You're a good one to start with.
What?
You were the good person to start with, so we're just going to ask each one of you to introduce yourself and tell us what event you do.
I'm Sammy and I'm a junior and I do vault, floor, and beam.
I'm Heather Weehi and I do all of them.
And I'm a freshman.
I'm Kenzie Trolson. I'm a junior and I do all events.
I'm Becca Warner. I'm a sophomore and I do all of them.
I'm Gretchen Sharp. I am a junior and I do every event as well.
I'm Isabel Bartash. I'm a junior and I do all the events as well.
And I'm Peyton Klassen. I'm a junior and I also do all of the events.
And I'm Joan Ledson and I'm representing the coaching staff. Dusty Dennis couldn't be with us tonight and I coach beam and floor and Dusty coaches vault and bars, so we make a great team together.
Any questions? Yes, can you tell us a little bit about the state tournament event itself? Many of us have seen the newspaper coverage, but we have a great opportunity to hear it firsthand.
Yeah, the state meet was incredible. We had a great season. We were pretty much undefeated. We came in third in one of our tournaments, our invitationals, this year, but we won pretty much every other meet throughout the season, but there wasn't that one meet where everything came together. So that Friday night was the night. These guys were incredible. Dusty and I, we didn't even know where we were in the standings. When they got done with floor, it was just magical. We just ran over and we couldn't have been more proud of them. It was amazing. Everything came together. They worked hard all year to get what they got and they deserved it.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Congratulations to all of you awesome girls. I just wanted to speak to the time commitment that I'm sure it is. And I'm wondering if you can speak to that. I don't have a kid in this sport, but I know it's a lot, so maybe you could just speak to that. Great job, all of you.
Well, we spend a lot of time. Our season starts the first full week before Thanksgiving and it ended two weeks ago. So we practice Monday through Saturday, starting in November. And our meets start, well, we had a bye the first week this year, so our meets started in the second week in December. From that week on, we had a Thursday and a Saturday meet in December. And then all of January, we had a Thursday meet, a Saturday meet, a Thursday meet, a Saturday meet, a Thursday meet, a Saturday meet, with practices every other day except Sunday. So the month of January, we got to know each other very well. But, and then February is a little bit more of like JV conference and sections and then the state meet. So it's a big commitment, but it's well worth it.
How has the new facility helped?
You guys answer that one.
It's really nice.
It helps a lot. Yeah, being able to have the kids helps because then you can train bigger skills and not worry as much about falling.
So, yeah, and we have to thank the community for that because it made a big difference and we appreciate that.
Great. Shelley?
I just want to tell you girls, job well done. And I would thank you for all the work you do with the junior ponies. It's a really special thing, you guys. I know so many of you work with them and you do a great job and you're great role models, so thank you for all of that as well.
Congratulations.
Director?
Oh, sorry. Oh, no. Yeah, my question kind of connects to Director Pearson's in terms of being a role model and younger student athletes who might, oops, excuse me, younger student athletes who might be watching and just what advice and words of wisdom and what you might share with them.
Don't give up.
Yeah, just never give up on your dreams and never think they're too big. Because going into the season, we had no idea if we would actually accomplish this much. And it was definitely our goal to win state, but it was still a dream come true when it happened.
Great. Well, you know, we don't get to congratulate state champions that often. This year seems to be really great, so.
Girl power.
Yes, exactly. So, you know, again, congratulations. It's an honor for us to recognize you and we do recognize that it's a lot of hard work and, you know, being a student athlete and a student takes a lot of dedication. So congratulations and job well done, so thank you.
I'd also like to ask Principal Heather Nelson and Principal Stephen Gordy to the podium, please. And before we have them share with us a little bit, I just want to read the media release about the Professional Leadership Award that Heather was awarded. The Minnesota Elementary Schools Principal Association recognized Heather Nelson, Principal of Rutherford Elementary, with the 2018 Mespa Division Leadership Award. Principals are responsible for a school's instructional, school culture, and resource leadership. The award honors principals whose exemplary leadership and sustained efforts have made noteworthy contributions to the operation of effective school learning programs, improving education, the community, and their profession. Heather was recognized by colleagues statewide on February 8th at the 2018 Mespa Premier Elementary Principal Celebration of the Year, which was celebrated at the Mespa Institute, an annual statewide convention of Minnesota's elementary and middle-level principals. Ms. Nelson was nominated by Stephen Gordy, one of our principals, from Lake Elmo Elementary in our school district on behalf of the East Suburban Division. And I'm going to ask Heather and Stephen to share just a little bit, Heather, about her experiences, and Stephen, if you would share with us a little bit about why you nominated your colleague Heather.
So I'll start. We're Chair Lehman, Directors and Superintendent Pontrelli. Thank you very much. We're all very fortunate to work in a district that has such talented people, and the person to my left is one of those very, very talented individuals. There are 12 divisions across the state of Minnesota. We belong to the East Suburban, as Superintendent Pontrelli said. And if I could, just a couple of things that Heather is too humble to identify of accomplishments that she's achieved. She's been in the district for 16 years. She served at Stonebridge for many years and also, most recently, at Rutherford as principal. And when you look at the work that she's done, she's identified as a strong relational leader that understands instruction as well as any principal in this school district. When we started the instructional coaching initiative throughout the district, the first person that the instructional coaches went to for support and direction was Ms. Nelson because they understood and knew how well she understood instruction. Also, while she was at Stonebridge, Heather was the first principal to formally introduce PLCs, professional learning communities, into this district. She embedded a time for teachers where they had an opportunity to meet in their PLCs and she had this fully implemented across Stonebridge. This was almost 10 years ago, way ahead of the curve of the rest of the district. At Rutherford, she thoughtfully planned and implemented the Makerspace Center to expand student learning there and really give those kids a heads-up, again, ahead of some of the other schools. So, again, a real accomplished learning experience for all of those. So I was thrilled to nominate her, to recognize some of the great things she's done.
First of all, I want to thank my dear friend and my colleague, Stephen Gordy. I've had the pleasure of working with him for 16 years and as much as he just said about me, I feel the same about him. I learned from all of the amazing leaders in this district and I feel incredibly humbled to work for this school district and to work for such a strong leadership team and school board. And I feel equally blessed to get to go into Rutherford Elementary every day and work with such an outstanding group of teachers and staff. And my students are amazing. My families are amazing. And I feel like the only reason that I've been able to accomplish what I have is because of all of them. And they make me a stronger leader, so I just feel incredibly fortunate. This is my community. I live in this community and I couldn't be prouder to be a part of it. And I really appreciate you taking the time to recognize me, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is open forum. We have 10 speakers tonight, so I will read to those speakers our open forum requirements. Stillwater area district welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, the law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceeding immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with the speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. Director Pelletier to my left will have a time key, time. We allow five minutes per speaker. And I will start. The first speaker tonight is Sid Stephen.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
My name is Sid Stephen. I'm the owner of the Stagecoach Trail Bus Facility that the district uses to park its buses at. And if I can get this document camera to work here. I didn't have a Mac computer, so I couldn't hook up your projector, so I'm already at a disadvantage here. Let's see if I can get it this way. So that's the site. You're probably aware of that. And so my reason for attending tonight is there's been some misconceptions about the possible presence of hazardous waste on this site. And I wish to dispel that as follows. So this memo here is the first page of the MPCA study that the district's been using to question whether it should stay at this facility or not because of the presence of hazardous waste. This is a many-page document. This is the first page, but it's the 1995 study that you've been using. And I just want to show where those samples were taken from. This is called the NSP Junker Site. So this is going to be a little tricky to do, but, so. What you see here is, this is the geographic coordinates that are in that study that say where that site is, exact geographic coordinates. I had the Washington County Surveyor plot those on an aerial photo. So they're up here. You can't see it very well, but there's a yellow X, but you have all this in your packets here, okay? So there's that 839, it's 839 feet north of where the buses are, is where that site is, all right? There's also three residences and two large vacant parcels in the mean before you get This aerial photo is taken in 1969. And if you zoom in where this circle is here, you can actually see some barrels from that dump site, exactly the same location as the coordinates on the other map. All right? So that was in 1969 before the bus facility existed. Notice the north wall of the prison here. No, there's nobody climbing over, right? Very hard to see, but my intention here is to show that the north wall of the prison is right here. And here's the dump site and way down here is the bus facility. So again, it's showing over 900 feet away. So when I purchased the property, I did have a Phase 1 assessment done. And so I want to tell you that there's several citations in this study that say where the Junker Site is. And the fact that it's not even listed on this report is because it's at least a quarter mile away. You've got that there. It's the same thing here. It's not the same site. The disparity comes because Junker owned both sites. And so it's easy to think, I could see why you would think, that it's the same place. It isn't. He owned the sanitation transfer site, which is the bus facility, and he owned this toxic Now, I did have, I want to be transparent here. They did find debris on my site when they did the Phase 2 study. They did do a Phase 2 study. And they found construction demolition debris. They knocked a building down and legally buried it on-site. So there's concrete, there's two-by-fours, glass, whatnot. And that was dug up in a trenching operation, but it's not toxic. That's the main point, all right? So my point is that the board can still happily consider this site and stay there. And so it's a fraction of the cost of what you've been considering elsewhere. And so you spent a lot of money on a fuel station there 10 years ago. You spent a lot of money on the plug-ins for the buses. And there's a turning lane that was put in on the county road. And you can either renew the long-term lease or you can purchase the property for a fraction of what you've been looking at. There's no issues, no barriers that remain as far as I can tell, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know you handed us this packet and this contains the information that you were showing, so if anyone has any questions, they can certainly get ahold of you. Great, thank you very much. Next speaker I have is Keith Bisbala. I hope I said that correctly.
Pretty close.
Welcome. Could you state your name then and your address, too?
Yeah, Keith Bisbala. I'm at 1225 Pioneer Trail in Bayport. So my wife and I have put together a letter here and I'm actually going to read you that letter. It really shares our story and concerns we have, in particular around Anderson Elementary. You guys will be receiving this letter after the meeting. It shares our concerns, but, you know, I know we're definitely not alone with our concerns. My family has lived in the Stillwater area for almost 20 years and Bayport for the last 12. Our two daughters have attended Anderson Elementary and, in fact, our youngest still attends 3rd grade there. We've always been proud and involved supporters of the school and have felt very lucky to be raising our family here. I'm writing to you because some pretty significant concerns I have with Anderson and the district as it relates to school safety and the lack of mental health and behavioral support for our teachers and students. I'd like to describe some of our troubling experiences during this school year so far. Up until this year, our youngest daughter, Annalise, has always been an excellent student at the top of her class, and she is also qualified for gifted and talented clusters. She's always loved going to school each day to see her teachers and her classmates. A couple of weeks into the school year this year, Annalise came home and told us about an incident with a classmate that caused her entire class to evacuate to another area of the building. This child got into a physical altercation with another student, ran through the school while staff members tried to reach him and ultimately threatened to kill his classmates. Annalise came home very upset and not wanting to go back to school. The student returned to class the next day. As the days passed, Annalise would come home telling us about more significant behavioral disruptions in her classroom caused by classmates. Threats to safety caused more evacuations. Kids have been kicked, punched, dragged, and head chairs thrown at them. There have been multiple verbal threats that kids were going to get harmed or killed. Teachers and subs have faced vulgar verbal attacks. My daughter told us that a classmate brought a screwdriver one day and chased kids threatening to kill them. As these events would happen, a member of the support staff would come remove the child for a short time and then the child would return. This would happen over and over again. One of my daughter's classmates was physically assaulted on the playground at lunchtime. Leadership's solution at the time was to have the girl eat her lunch inside the next day instead of addressing the issue. We, along with the rest of the parents, have never been formally notified of any of these incidents and our kids are coming home afraid. The level and severity of the extreme behavior has increased significantly this year compared to prior years. Unfortunately, there seems to be a story like this in most, if not all, grade levels at Anderson this year. My daughter's confidence hit an all-time low. Our outgoing happy girl became afraid of school and her class. She cried in the mornings about going. She became anxious and her testing and assessments began to plummet. She would tell us that she could not concentrate in school because the lessons would constantly be interrupted. We reached out to the principal, a member of the administration, and a student advocate about our concerns. There have been multiple emails sent, in-person meetings, and phone calls. We asked about help for the teacher and why kids who exhibit this behavior are still allowed in the classroom. still allowed in the classroom. We have been repeatedly told that school leadership was working on it, yet behavior continued and escalated. Instead of getting answers, my daughter was given instructions to remove herself from the classroom, to calm down whenever there was a fearful or threatening situation, instead of dealing with the issue. This contributed to further decline in her confidence and made her feel as though she was wrong or being stressed, or for being stressed and fearful. The district has very clear discipline policy that prohibits the behavior that has been displayed in this classroom, and unfortunately is being allowed to continue. Our daughter's academic performance has dropped to an alarming level that the teachers and staff cannot explain. They told us it must be medical. Although we didn't fully agree with their assessment, we moved forward to the series of lab tests and a brain scan, which all came out normal, thankfully. Her pediatrician believes she's dealing with extreme effects of anxiety, fear, and stress that the school environment has caused. We completely agree. I'm telling you this because things need to change. There's a clear lack of behavioral and mental support for students and teachers. Anderson Elementary is only staffed with a school psychologist on a .2 or 8-hour-a-week basis. There's no behavioral specialist, and there's a student advocate only there on a half-time basis. These teachers have no one to go to if they need help with threatening situations. They're spending their days managing bad behavior instead of successfully teaching lessons, and all the students are suffering. They do not have the resources they need to do their jobs effectively. My questions for you are: In light of the horrific school attacks in the country, why isn't mental health and behavior being made a priority at Anderson? Why are teachers being told there's no money for this, yet we've heard there are plans to add on to newly opened Brookview because it is already too small? Other schools like Lake Elmo have reduced referrals because there seems to be services and staff that their principals unable to put in place. Why isn't Anderson being given the same opportunities? You know, we're aware that there's issues in every school, in every classroom, in the district. However, we're not talking about typical behavior here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, I have Mira White. Welcome.
307 Edgewood in Stillwater. Hello, everyone. I'd like to thank you for your time tonight. I want to apologize in advance. I'll be leaving very quickly right after this to hopefully attend my children's band concert at the Stillwater Middle School. And I am here tonight to talk about dyslexia. I do want to give thanks and appreciation to those who have already shared their stories on dyslexia before me. It's certainly not an easy thing to do, but it is important. It is estimated that 1 in 5 students has dyslexia. Our district has started to place much emphasis on mental health, and I've attended the meetings in support of this cause. I feel that providing proper support to dyslexics many times is a precursor to improve mental health for many of them. There are many reasons why kids suffer from such mental health conditions as depression and anxiety. One of those is unaddressed dyslexia. This disorder can affect reading, spelling, writing, working memory issues, and slow processing speed. Attitude Magazine, a resource for ADHD, also states that about 50% to 60% of people with ADHD also have a learning disability. The most common of these is dyslexia. The International Dyslexia Association explains, "All people, young and old, can experience overwhelming stress and exhibit signs of anxiety, but children, adolescents, and adults with dyslexia are particularly vulnerable." That's because many individuals do not fully understand the nature of their learning disability, and as a result, tend to blame themselves for their own difficulties. Proper reading instruction for dyslexics might not only be helpful, but may be essential to the mental health of many of our students. My son with dyslexia was lucky to encounter staff knowledgeable of his needs to start getting help at an early age. I, like many other parents, thought initially that I should just read more with my child. Then I did watch my son go through the Sandoz program, which is based on the Orton-Gillingham method, and I started to really understand what was going on exactly with him and his reading issues. It turns out that he wasn't gonna acquire reading skills by osmosis, like some lucky few do, but his instruction had to be cumulative, explicit, systematic, and structured. He didn't have an issue with motivation, and he never has. And he probably never will. Hearing sounds and putting words, pulling words apart was really difficult for him, but once he developed the skill, he could organize what he was learning and just really be a lot more efficient. He could stop exerting so much effort on the first step of decoding what that word was, or trying to memorize the word, which he was really, actually fairly good at memorizing the words. But, but once he could figure this out, he could stop the tears and the frustration. You may see, you may say that we found the key to the door, and once the door was open, his reading comprehension and love of reading really grew organically. Better reading skills has led to better math skills, which he enjoys doing greatly. Many math problems for younger kids involves word problems. It was really a big struggle. You just, you can't get to your math skills until you can read the problem. Dyslexia doesn't correlate negatively with intelligence, and many bright and courageous students with it have much to offer. Then to National Dyslexia Association states, "Research has shown that writing in the brains of people with dyslexia is different, and many believe that this different wiring of the brain causes people with dyslexia to see problems in different ways that can support innovation and success." My hope is that these students also get the key to the door, just like my son did. His work paid off. We did just get his acceptance letter, not to brag as a parent, but he'll be in the National Junior Honor Society, and he didn't get there without getting some really good reading skills beforehand. Most studies show that children need to be good readers by 3rd grade to continue learning everything else well. For those teaching dyslexics, this requires knowledge of what dyslexia is, what specific instruction those students need, and how to deliver it. Many in our district already have some of the training in the Sandoz program, or have experience in other methods that utilize the Orton-Gillingham method. I'd hope to see that this training would continue and expand in a very deliberate and systematic manner. More in-depth training helps teachers really to understand, to a much higher degree, what the kids are missing, and really to enjoy those moments where they can make those missing connections for students in a meaningful way. Many students can't afford to, families can't afford to hire a tutor, and they really deserve to have at least the basics of that instruction in a solid way. That's why I'm attending the two-week training myself this summer in order to reach more students in our area who really need help with the tutoring. There's a long waiting list for parents to get into these tutors, so it's kind of a big issue. The Minnesota Department of Education has appointed a dyslexia expert. It would be really great to see us partner closely with either this expert or, or another dyslexia expert, really to have a comprehensive plan for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Tina Riley.
Tina Riley, Norrell Avenue North. Over the past several months, we as a district have been speaking intensely about our up-and-coming strategic plan. We have spent many hours devoted to the topic of what a successful student looks like, and incorporating the business community leader's idea of what attributes students will need when they graduate. Today, I would like to talk about a different pillar of our strategic plan, the social-emotional component. I've been speaking a lot over the past two years about our school culture. I've had casual conversations with our superintendent about the need to fix what isn't working within our walls. I've posted numerous times on how important connection is between students and faculty. In light of the recent tragedy, I believe this conversation is becoming more and more relevant and important. I also believe this is relatively inexpensive, but requires intent and effort. A study from WestEd, a San Francisco-based research agency, has shown that school climate is what makes extraordinary successful schools different from other schools. A positive school climate includes caring relationships between teachers and students, physical and emotional safety, and academic and emotional support that helps students succeed. The goal of a positive school climate is a sense of belonging, competence, and autonomy for both students and staff. Out of 40 similar schools that overperform consistently and significantly, the positive school climate, how connected, motivated, and safe students feel was key. The report also identified 20 underperforming schools that shared a negative school climate trait. School climate was more impressive to driving up or down test scores than teacher experience or staff ratio. Along with teachers and students creating a relatedness or a connectedness, we also need students to be connected to one another. Our district is very large. We have a lot of smaller groups that network. When do these groups have time to come together? When does networking become community? What about assemblies, and where have they gone? Stillwater Middle School no longer has bleachers in the gymnasium. There are no assemblies gathered there. The high school is now so large, we cannot fit all grades together in the gymnasium, so we just canceled the assembly. We are growing so large, we are losing connectedness. If we as a community can start to put back relatedness and connectedness with one another, unity will fall into place. Do we have school spirit anymore? Our dance team has five dancers. Our cheerleaders come from VAA. Yes, we have a pep band. There is no marching band. Student council has disappeared from Stillwater Middle School. I fear we have become a school where everybody is so centrally focused, we have forgotten about the community we are supposed to be proud of. Assemblies don't need to be only about athletics. It is a time to recognize all parts of our student body. Schools and parent groups that take time to build school spirit instill a sense of pride in their students that could result in better attendance and grades and a positive school culture. Can we afford not to make the time? A positive and engaged school community also sees a decrease in racism, bullying, teacher burnout, disengaged students, casual vandalism and litter, cultural and socioeconomic differences. It decreases absenteeism, suspensions, substance abuse, and increases students' academic achievement, motivation to learn, and psychological well-being. It can even mitigate the negative effects of self-criticism and socioeconomic status on academic success. In addition, working in this kind of climate lessens teacher burnout while increasing retention. Building strong relationships needs to be a whole-school priority, starting in the elementaries. Teachers need to have time to talk to their students in and out of the classroom. The goal should be for every adult in the building to maintain a high rate of positive interactions with students, and to show genuine interest in their lives, or activities, their goals, and their struggles. School culture, community, relatedness, teacher-student connectedness, peer connectedness, volunteers and mentors, and school spirit can all fit perfectly into the social-emotional component of the strategic plan. I think it's time to improve the school climate, and I don't think we can afford to ignore it any longer. I'm ready and willing to lead the charge of putting together a volunteer mentoring program. Just point me in the direction of who it is I need to work with. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chair Lehman, Board Members, and Superintendent Pontrelli. My name is Andrea McCready, and I live on Churchill Street West by the hospital. I'm a class of 86 graduate of Stillwater Schools. I was also a plaintiff in the 834 voice lawsuit. In my open forum speech on January 25th, 2018, I referenced a lawsuit settlement document that both the 834 voice attorney and the mediation attorney referred to as confidential. A community member had placed this document on the audience chairs at the January 4th, 2018 board meeting. This document was the initial settlement offer from the 834 voice lawsuit, an email dated November 10th, 2017, sent on mediation day from 834 Vice President Ziss Weissberg to the mediator Mark Manderscheid. And I have two of those physical copies right here that were placed on those chairs. I asked who had provided the document to this community member, and whether it was obtained through a written data request process. After that meeting, the district's data responsible person approached me privately and quietly to say that the community member had put in a data request, and that the attorney for the school district, Peter McHale, then gave the document to her to give to him. Subsequently, on February 5th, I put in my own written data request to inspect all documents in whole or in part that contain the name Manderscheid or the email address mmanderscheid@briggs.com during the dates of November 6th, 2017, through February 2nd, 2018. And for each individual redaction, I requested that the district also provide the reason for the redaction. It's now been a month, and that data request has not been fulfilled. However, I did receive an email from the data responsible person today telling me that I should expect to receive the data by the end of next week. I want to let you all know what the attorney for 834 Voice, Fritz Knack, says regarding the aforementioned community member's statement that the mediation documents are public. Fritz says he's just simply wrong. We all signed a confidentiality agreement, and his use of that information is a violation of an express agreement signed by representatives of the school district. So I do question whether that community member truly did receive the mediation document through a written data request. So I'm also now repeating my request from my previous speech, since that was the main point of my previous speech, and that is, if for some reason, the initial settlement offer is deemed by the district to be a public document rather than a confidential document, I request the following. The reason the document was deemed by the district to be acceptable to be made public. And also, with dismissal of the lawsuit, District 834 also rejected adoption of the ethical guidelines they had proposed during the mediation process. I request that if this document is not confidential, that the district post its mediation settlement proposal points publicly, and also address each point as to whether or not the district will take the action it had proposed and why. The district's response, posted publicly, will provide key guidance toward a more ethical path going forward for the district, so it would be most beneficial for the public to have ready access to it. At the February 8th, 2018 board meeting, Speaker Tanya Weigl at Open Forum requested that the board ensure transparent official responses to the speakers by posting both their questions and the official district responses on the district website. Many open forum speakers have asked questions but have not received official district responses, and I am one of those people. Therefore, I am also reiterating Tanya Weigl's request that the district's response be posted publicly on the district website.
Next speaker I have is Sandy Hayner.
Hi there. My name is Sandy Hayner from Stillwater, Minnesota. This board and administration hired consultant Mary Sacconi to guide you on healing the community that you fractured. Some in the community argue that we have yet to see a return on that investment. However, at one point, I had hoped for a positive and meaningful change when Mrs. Sacconi advised the board and the superintendent to answer questions that are asked at the open forum. The professional advice was to address these questions at the following meeting. This was also a significant rationale in the advice to move to twice-a-month meetings as opposed to the once-a-month meetings. This was claimed to allow for more opportunity for public and transparent communication. Many of us who have participated in these open forums can and have testified that the indifference and uninterested attitude that we receive up here is more than disrespectful, especially considering your role as public servants who work with us. You're spending our money, and you're supposed to be making excellent decisions for our children. For this reason, Mary Sacconi's advice was music to our ears. It appears that for a brief time, this advice was heated, sort of. You would pick and choose who you deemed worthy of a response, and who should be ignored. How is that equitable? For example, just keep in mind here that I'm just one of many. I once received a non-response, a non-responsive handwritten note from George Hefner shoved at me while he was leaving a board meeting. Why not just read it during the actual meeting that just took place? George was the board chair at the time. Where's the transparency in secret notes? I asked that very question at another open forum and made a plea that public questions be given public answers. Frustrated, I reached out to the board's hired community engagement consultant, Mary Sacconi, and she backpedaled and quipped that neither the board nor the admin owes us any answers. They can ignore us if they choose. Interesting, because they were already doing that for free. It was a terrible disappointment. Why is it so hard to get real answers around here? Who is hiding what and why? Why is this allowed? I'm asking all board members to hold each other accountable on this. The stonewalling isn't limited to just open forums, though. I reviewed hundreds of pages of data requests and discovered glaring inaccuracies in redactions and giant holes of missing emails. When inquiries were made regarding these infractions, they were not taken seriously, nor were they answered respectfully. I approached you once again at the November 9th, 2017 open forum, seeking further understanding and resources to clarify this district's policies as mandated by the long-established Minnesota Data Practices Act. I asked for public answers to these public questions. George Hefner, again, the chair, said he'd be willing to look into it if I wrote the questions down for him, so I did. Here's a question, or here's a copy. Remember that? I patiently waited for a response, nothing. Then I repeatedly asked him for a response, nothing. He told me that he would email them. He told me someone else emailed them. He implied that I was a liar when I told him I never received an email, nor did I even submit an email address for him to use. He told me he'd give them to me in person, and four months later, here we are. None of those things have happened. He even told me that he emailed them to somebody else. Why? How does that make any sense? He told me I should go to that person for my answers. I'm at nearly every board meeting and retreat. George hurries past me as though I'm invisible. He has no idea who I am, or that I was never even a student in his class. He has no idea who I am or that I was never even a student in his class. How is that for community engagement? Clearly, I'm not the only one frustrated with this process, as a recent open forum speaker addressed you, requesting that the board and administration make a habit and perhaps even a policy of publicly and transparently responding to speakers who take the time to share their thoughts and concerns. Ironically, the superintendent responded to this speaker and indicated that this practice actually does take place when questions are asked. Okay, so number one, that's not true. And number two, this isn't Jeopardy!, where there's a loophole in the phrasing that absolves you of the responsibility to answer to the public you serve. Concerns are just as valid as questions and deserve a thoughtful, direct, respectful, public, timely, and transparent response. So Tom, I'm now asking you as the new chair, is this something as a board you're willing to commit and create a policy to hold you and future board members and administration accountable to the public, otherwise known as your employers? So to get to those questions that I still have, number one, how are board members classified as per the Data Practices Act? Are they employers? Are they employees, I mean, or elected officials? Where can I find documentation of this classification? Who is the legally required responsible authority in regards to data practices? Number four, where can I find documentation of this responsible authority and when they were delegated? Number five, where can I find the records retention schedule as it pertains to the Minnesota Records Act? Number six, when was the district's plan submitted to the state board and approved? Number seven, how long are board members and administrative staff directed to keep emails and materials deemed by the law to be official record? Number eight, where would I find the district's DPA redaction log as required by law? And number nine, who would I contact in order to access this log? Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Jane Groby. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Jane Groby, and I teach at Salem Lutheran School here in Stillwater, and I've been teaching there since 2001. So I've been in this district for a long time and have watched the Stillwater community grow and work together with us as private schools. However, one time in the near past, we were already asked to change our start time, and now you're looking at us pushing our start time back again. We serve students that are from grades preschool through grade eight, and we fit that category of the age where children need sleep. It's not a problem that we as a school district or a school can fix. It's a parent problem. When parents don't get their children to bed in time, then they don't get the necessary sleep. I'm speaking from experience from many years of teaching, where I have seen the children in our classroom and their community that they're coming from have changed with how they react in relationship to how much sleep they get, how much care, how much extra activities they have. And now we have on top of that the cellphone use, which was clearly stated by the presenters that were earlier. Our problem is not so much the sleep time, but it is what you're looking for to change our private schools to, a different start time. And a ten o'clock start time is not acceptable. When both presenters said the best time for student learning is in the morning, and then you're taking away our morning, you are hijacking our children for the sake of the group of high schoolers. And that's not fair to our students and our community that we serve. We have a very valid reason to be in this community, to serve as a Christian education piece for our families that we serve. If they do not want to attend a public school, they have the opportunity to go to a parochial school here in our community. And don't hijack our time because you can't solve a busing issue. That's, I think that's very important, that you can't just fix one problem and then not help everyone else in the community. We're here too. And our parents pay taxes as well. And we don't use all the tax money that they're giving. They don't get that benefit. They use busing, and that's about it. And not even all of our parents are using that busing. So you would be tying our hands and would affect all of the private schools here in our community and sanctuary prep as well. And that ten o'clock start time would also affect the extracurriculars that they are wanting to participate. Our children, as they are now, are leaving our schools at middle school time to participate in extracurriculars, and when they leave, they're coming out of our classrooms where we're teaching them. So they're losing already time, and now you're going to say, oh, and they're going to lose two hours of teaching time? That's not fair to them. They're students too. On top of that, when we look at the social media devices, we cannot solve that problem without educating our parents. It's all over social media. If you look at the timestamps of the high schoolers right now and when they're posting, it's not before ten o'clock. I'm sorry. Their social stamps that they're putting on their time is sometimes two, three in the morning. Bedtime is a parent's responsibility, so please take that into consideration. Yes, the sleep issue is a big problem, but we can't solve it by just pushing everyone else aside. Thank you.
Thank you. Fortunately, this is another one I think I'm going to not do so well on. Roger Zella? I'm going to blame it on your handwriting.
I was going to apologize for handwriting. Zoldan.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. I am, my name is Rogers Zoldan. I live at two-nine-seven Fifth Avenue North in Bayport. I grew up in Stillwater and went to the Stillwater Schools, so I have nothing but respect for the Stillwater Schools. This year, I'm the principal at Salem Lutheran School. I say this year because I'm an interim. We had a principal who accepted a position in another city, and we weren't able to find a principal, so the school asked me to fill in. I'm a retired teacher. I taught in Somerset, Wisconsin for thirty-six years. And since I was retired, they said I'd try it. But anyway, my concern is the same with Jane Groby. I know your concern is for the best educational experience for your high school students and students in all the grade levels, and that's our concern too. We strive to have academic excellence in everything we do, and our students do a wonderful job of achieving. But the prime times for learning is in the morning. The sweet spot is between ten AM and two PM. Right now, we're starting at nine fifteen, so we have forty-five minutes before the sweet spot, and we go until three forty, so we have an hour and twenty minutes after that. If the proposed schedule changes go through with the busing, the tiers, we would start possibly even later and go until four-ten, which is really late. And if you've ever taught, you know those afternoon classes don't do as well as morning classes, especially the last ones of the day. And I've been in plenty of those. And I think your experts expressed that too. So trying to solve one problem with the high school students needing to start later, and the solution we choose can create problems for other sections of our community. And I just want to point out that it does create a problem for our students. And I know we're in the last tier of the bus run, and that's expensive. But we're just asking you to consider how other people are affected. Jane alluded to students who like to use the Stillwater system for athletics and other curricular activities. If we were getting out at four o'clock in the middle school, we'd be getting out at two o'clock. They're missing over two hours because they have to leave early just to get there when the school gets out. And that's unacceptable. And I hate to see students lose the opportunity to participate in an activity that the district offers and makes available for everybody. Also, I've had parents of our school come and ask, what can we do? Because they're very concerned about the change in the schedule. Nine fifteen is already late. When I talk with other principals in our school system, and when I say that, I mean like our Lutheran school system, they're surprised that we start this late and that we get done as late as we do. So I'd like to have you just consider how other people are affected by the decision you will be making, and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. The next speaker I have is Tony Lesica. Wonder how I did on that one.
It's Lesica.
Ah, jeez.
Close. I'm Tony Lesica. I live in the Inspiration neighborhood in Bayport. I don't have a nice prepared letter like many of the people tonight, but if there's one thing I'm here to do, it's to convey humbly but severely. I'd like to second Keith's comments about Anderson Elementary. I want you to understand that there are dozens of parents who are involved in this who have these exact same experiences. This is not a minor issue. It is severe, and it is important. It is impacting our children's education, their learning, their safety. These are significant issues. So I never got involved in the bold stuff and whatever else. Like, I'm not, I'm too busy. I got a bunch of other stuff, businesses and everything going on. But I took time out of my schedule tonight to come here and convey to you, you have no idea the impact that this is having on several children's lives and learning, and you have no idea how many parents feel this way to this same extent. So whatever you guys do, budgeting, resource allocation, I just urge you to take it extremely seriously because it is very impactful. When my kid is coming home and telling me some very mature understandings of what's happening in the classroom, and he's in second grade, when he's explaining to me what's happening, and this person, this kid just seems to need, would need help with things or the teacher has to interrupt. Quick little funny story, he said, you know, every time it's reading, it's like, takes an extra twenty minutes because the teacher has to stop and deal with this. And he adds, you know, that means every three days, it's an hour that we're losing. Like, great job on the math, buddy, but that's a problem, right? That's a problem. Because of this, my parents have started volunteering in the classroom. I've started volunteering in the classroom. I've got my work. I've got a business. I've got grad school. I've got, you know, family and all that stuff. And I'm now taking time to volunteer to make sure that I know what's going on in my kid's classroom. It's a big deal, so please, take it seriously.
Thank you very much. Last speaker tonight, and I know I'm not going to goof this up, is Dr. Matthew Cooper.
Well done.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Matt Cooper, North Manning. I'm a cardiovascular surgeon, so I have some experience with chronic fatigue. I've also consulted for many years in optimized human performance, including sleep hygiene, based on data from NASA, aviation, medicine, nuclear power, and the military. I think we could agree on a couple of things with respect to start time, and that is that students need their sleep, and we could agree that school is important. But I think you also might agree with me that school is part of the balanced development of a child that goes on outside of school as well. I would respectfully urge the board to have caution in accepting some of the data that you saw earlier today. It was presented as both precise and accurate, and that is not true. And I'll give you a couple of examples. You were told precisely that adolescents need nine-point-two-five hours of sleep, but you were also shown a slide that in excess of nine hours of sleep, the rate of depression and psychological problems increased. They can't both be true. You were told on the basis of melatonin levels that the period between ten-thirty PM and eight-thirty AM were sacrosanct. You needed to carve out those periods. In fact, when you look at those melatonin levels, the thresholds that give you pause at ten-thirty actually drop down at seven AM, not at eight-thirty. And if you really want to look at the levels as to when they return to baseline the next day, they're at one PM. I don't think you'd delay start time to one PM in a given day. The reality is that there is tremendous human variability. The speakers earlier today referenced larks and night owls, the people whose circadian rhythms are different. Yes, children are different. Yes, adolescents are different. The time at which kids go to bed like adults is based on many behavioral factors, many of which are controllable. I would suggest to you that to consider as a significant part of the solution to sleep deprivation, to institutionalize start times in schools rather than employ discipline by students and their parents the night before requires very careful consideration and balance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Consent Matters. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school board and will be enacted by one motion and an affirmative vote by a majority of the board members present. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate subject by the board. I am aware that Director Patachek would like to pull item F and G?
Yes.
Both, okay. So I'll go through them. If anyone else would like something pulled, please let me know, and we will pull it. So on the consent agenda tonight are the minutes of February twenty-second, 2018, dispersments register February fifteenth through the twenty-eighth, 2018, the Human Resource Personnel Report, the release of one-year-only probationary teachers, Stillwater Middle School roof replacement project, Lake Elmo Elementary School playground equipment, and the Lake Elmo Elementary School playground fall zone. So could I have a motion to adopt consent agenda items A through E?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and voting aye. Aye, opposed? All right. Mike, do you want to start with number F?
I'd love to. And F and G kind of run together. My point is, I was given a packet. I looked at the packet. I read the packet. Some wonderful things are happening at Lake Elmo. This is a playground that is long overdue. There are such things as considerable volunteer efforts that are going to be used to install this playground. And really, what I want to do is to go through that proposal, share it with the public so they realize what happened. Well, one of the reasons this project has been so delayed is because of its location, and they were waiting for the sewer lines to hook up. And the way I understand it, that's finally occurred. And so it allows this to go through. But at the same time, what I would ask is for someone to do it, give us an idea of what's going to happen, the why of it, the scope of it, and again, commend some volunteers who are promising to do some awesome things. Kristin, could you take that?
I could. I would request if Principal Gordy, he was intimately involved with the process with his PTA. So if he, what I would request is that he speak to the process first, and then I'm more than happy to go through the documents as they relate.
Great. Opportunistic that you're here, Principal Gordy, if you would like to help us with this.
Absolutely. Help me out, Director Patachek. I'll try to answer the questions as you laid them out, and please prompt me if there's anything else I need to add.
Thank you.
So when it was determined that Lake Elmo would be connected to city sewer, we then understood that it was going to open an opportunity for us to build a playground. Now, understand that the current septic system exists underneath the playground as it stands right now. So what would happen is there's a fair amount of grading and excavation that would happen as part of this process. Now, to actually hook it up was a simple procedure. It meant, you know, you disconnected the old system coming out of the building and you connected to the new system coming in. The problem that was left was that there's, again, a fair amount of equipment that's underground, that's old and deteriorating, that needs to be addressed. The plan was that that would happen in the summer of 2018. So as all of this was determined, again, I viewed it as an opportunity, as you said, to capitalize on a much-needed playground. And again, can I emphasize the fact or share the fact that Lake Elmo serves as the cluster site for the medically complex students? What that means is we have between twenty-five and thirty students that function with assisted devices. Those range from wheelchairs to walkers and other such kinds of devices. Currently, the playground exists on wood chips, so if a child's in a wheelchair, the playground is just not accessible. We do have some swings that are suitable for them. In many cases, it takes two people to push the wheelchair across. In many cases, it takes two people to push the wheelchair across the wood chips, and then two people to pick the child up out of their wheelchair and put them in there. So again, with all of the construction happening with the excavation, we saw it as an opportunity. I contacted my PTA, and I asked them if they would be willing to work with me to help fund the playground. Now, Stillwater Schools follows a pattern where if a school wants to put in a playground, it becomes the responsibility of a parent group, in our case at Lake Elmo, it would be our Parent Teacher Association, to do fundraising to meet the costs of the said playground. And so once we knew for a fact that there would be some excavation occurring in 2018, we then put about, you know, starting the process of finding people that would step forward to do the volunteer work to help us raise the money to put a playground in. Now, I can tell you that from my perspective in April of 2017, that's a real daunting task. Because for those of you that have paid attention to the price tags of playgrounds, or for those of you that don't know, they've skyrocketed, like many things. And so it was discouraging to look at what the costs were and our limited ability to raise money. Specifically, it was time. And so we set about in May, June, to put a group together and start down the road of the fundraising. We modeled our team after what was done at a school in Moundsview. Turtle Lake has a fully inclusive playground. I believe Turtle Lake also serves a population similar to ours. And they put together what I would describe as a development proposal, where there was a mission and a vision and a comprehensive, you know, perspective of what all was going to be part of the work. So that group tried to lay out that information because our goal then was to go to local agencies, businesses, and other groups that would join us in participating in the raising of that money. We knew we were not going to be able to raise $100-plus thousand from asking kids to sell popcorn, or from our carnival, or, you know, wrapping paper. Those are traditional fundraisers that we use. We did, I'm proud to announce, have a marathon, we call it Booster-Thon, we use, in October, and we raised almost $30,000. That will go toward the playground. Our carnival is April 7th. It starts at 10 o'clock. For those of you who haven't been part of a Lake Elmo carnival, I encourage you to attend. School carnivals are one of those sacred traditions, and if you want to be reminded of life, what it was like in those nostalgic days, join us at the carnival. So I'm rambling on. I'll stop. Be specific about the questions, and I'll try to help out.
And just before Kristin, you do that, I think you've outlined it well, but I think people need to know, this goes way back to the Long Range Plan, when the plan was to install a playground here. I think you have shared with me on occasions, and probably many others, although it was very visible, that that playground, a lot of times, significant parts of it were surrounded by a snow fence because it wasn't usable.
The septic system was deteriorating, and, yeah, and there were some problems that resulted in us using, putting up a snow fence to block off certain areas of the playground. So, you know, we're excited that that's no longer part of our reality.
And to the point of the Long Range Plan, what is being covered with 2015 referendum dollars as designed in the budget is the playground surface. That was part of the 2015 vote. And so part of this proposal that is in front of you is, I want to say it's approximately $131,000. We had budgeted $126,000 for that playground surface. So we're right within where we believe we would be with the budget a few years ago. As far as the medically complex clientele that is housed in that building, given that that is a very specific programming to that building, the district also has set aside capital dollars for $70,000 for the ramps, for the inclusiveness. So typically, the school district does not contribute to the playground and the playground equipment, as Principal Gordy had referenced. And we won't, but given the programming, we wanted to make sure that that program and those students had an opportunity to participate in the new equipment. There will be additional work done. That is part of what would be a district repair and maintenance plan, just adding concrete sidewalks around the playground structure. All of those things are coming, but as far as the work on the playground equipment, the design, that goes to Principal Gordy and his association for doing that work.
Director Pelletier?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment because I remember these, some of these conversations, and the, you know, taking care of our kids with special needs is such an acutely important component to this. And maybe you could speak a little bit, because I had heard that you were very intentional in creating a group of people that kind of helped guide the process of what type of equipment, and you were, I heard quite a few accolades about how you handled that, so...
Absolutely. So one of the charges was to make sure we had a group that was representative of the entire parent community, and actually, the community at large. So we had a special education teacher, we had a general education teacher, we had a paraprofessional who has a long history at Lake Elmo. The majority of her time is spent on the playground, supervising students, so she's got an intimate knowledge in that. Then we also asked a couple of parents who are parents of children that are in wheelchairs or have other assisted devices. I myself, I'm a parent of a child who's in a wheelchair, so I think those of us in that situation have, you know, sort of an acute knowledge of what it means to actually be inclusive and not inclusive. I think also, well, it's fair to say that we really needed to improve the accessibility of the playground or the inclusive nature of it. We also had an opportunity then to take care of our preschool students. Remember, preschool was added to Lake Elmo. We are now a pre-K through 5th grade program. When the old playground was put in, preschool was not part of that reality. So we knew that we wanted to have a play structure that allowed students of all abilities to participate, but then also all of those ages, pre-K through 5th grade. And I am so very proud of the design that we came up with. There was some very rigorous discussion as to what to do. We had a PTA meeting where we invited many parents to come in to talk about what it meant to have a playground that met the needs of the students. Obviously, we had teachers talking to students to get information, so we did get input from children, which is very important. We also gathered staff input on that playground. And then the committee really worked together to come up with what the priorities were based on all that information we collected. And again, initially, what we came up with was not something that was sustainable financially. You know, we were talking, you know, $100,000 over what we could afford. So we kept working to bring it down until we actually found a product through a firm that was willing to put in a bid that was in, you know, the realm of what we could afford. But it still provides opportunities for all of our children to sort of meet the needs that I talked to. And I'm very proud to say that we will have two different entry points for students in wheelchairs to access, to access the main part of the playground, and it will raise them to a level of just a little bit over four feet. What that means is that 80% of the playground then is accessible by all students.
Thank you very much. Mike, would you like to make, oh, do you have a...
Just, yes, I would, but before, last thing, Stephen, that I would appreciate is, on the third page of the proposal, it talks about volunteer installation. If, I just want to recognize that in what I think it means.
I have to tell you, this really made me nervous because I envisioned showing up at 6 o'clock in the morning...
You better have your equipment.
And there's going to be a bag of bolts and pipes everywhere on my playground, and some directions, okay?
YouTube.
I don't shop at a key, and there's a reason for that. I am not handy. So there's a savings of almost $30,000 for us to do this on our own. And obviously, it's in the best interest of the company to provide this option because of the savings that is available. Because this has been a movement represented by many groups, staff, our paraprofessionals, our teachers, many of our parents, and now our community members. We had breakfast with the Rotary Group at the Lake Elmo Inn last Wednesday. John hosted us. It was delightful. And they are very supportive of not only financially trying to help us out, but also volunteering to help put it together. So you will be hearing from all of us, our target date at this point is the second week of August. It is going to take several days. It is not something that we can put up in a couple hours, even with 20 volunteers. It will take us three to four days to do it. And I'm excited, you know, to accept that challenge and move ahead.
And if there are volunteers in the community that want to participate...
I'll work with Parissa to make sure that information gets out to everybody, because trust me, we'll, we'll want people and we'll need people. I can go and buy water, and I can keep people hydrated, and I can encourage people to get the job done. I don't know that you want me messing around tightening screws and things like that.
This was not a plan, but I think this story had to be out there.
Yeah.
Tom, yeah. Oh, go ahead.
If I can, before, you've mentioned the company that, you know, worked on this, and I think St. Croix Recreation has done a lot of work in our district for a lot of years, done good work. I know the Johnson family is very proud of what they do on many of our playgrounds. And when I talked to Tony about this, he referenced the ability to work with them as a positive, and I believe there's a couple discounts built in there. I don't know exactly...
There are, and thank you for acknowledging that, Director Hepner. There is, and they were, Chris was great to work with. He did make it, as I said, he found that niche to sort of meet the needs of what our parents were asking for, but still deliver it at a price that we could afford. And that doesn't always happen nowadays.
Director Stivlin, did you have something?
I just wanted to say thank you to Director Patachek for bringing this, for taking this off of the consent agenda. I have really enjoyed hearing about this. This is one of those things that I think we all get excited about and can feel really proud of. And I thank you so much for sharing this story with us, and I'm really excited, and I'll plan to be there helping on sometime in August.
Thank you. And on behalf of the entire Lake Elmo community, you should know that we are very, very proud that this is an option that's available to us. And we are very grateful of the support, you know, from, we mentioned Tony, from the work that he's done to support us, from the work that Kristin has done, other district administrators who have supported this process all along. I know Dr. McDowell helped this summer to make sure that things were moving ahead. So the community is very grateful.
Thank you. With that, Director Patachek, would you like to move items F and G on the consent agenda?
Yes, I would.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Did you get that, Barb?
I believe it's Sarah.
Yes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we have on the agenda reports, and we have Dr. McDowell and Director Hoheisel with regards to start time considerations. He can have it.
Chair Lehman. School Board, Superintendent Pontrelli. Tonight, we're here to present start time considerations as a report to the school board as part of the information that you've received in the work session before the board meeting tonight, hopefully in helping you make decisions about where you would like to go next with regard to the idea of start times. The proposed start time timeline that we've put together, that you see in your packets and on the screen right now, has us, the triangle, the fourth box from the right for the people that are watching this, as I know that it's small, the fourth triangle from, or the fourth box from the left, which is a triangle, is today. And essentially, what that is saying is, in a timeline that would have us make a decision about start times by the end of May, if that's what you decided, tonight would be the night that we would need to decide whether or not we were going to move forward. So just so people could see kind of a timeline, if we were going to go and say, down at the bottom right-hand corner, by the end of, by the end of May, we wanted to have a decision about this. So it isn't that it has to be this way, but this is kind of a visual of what a timeline would be for that, getting us through the end of this school year this year. That being, getting a presentation at a work session, having experts come in, deciding on a guiding change for administration to move forward. And so for everyone, here's kind of a history of where we are with considering timelines. It actually isn't something that's new to this year or to last year. It's something that was brought up in 2010. It was something that was brought up in 2012 as part of strategic planning conversations. It's also been brought up in some of the surveys that have gone out as part of the district, as well as other opportunities for the public to provide feedback about things that they're interested in. So the current school board, all of you have expressed interest to this point in further exploring the topic of engaging in a conversation about start times with the community. And at this time, I just want to be clear that we're not making a recommendation one way or the other. It seemed prudent that we just put out there a presentation that answers some of the questions you had since our last discussion about start times, and then with the additional information that you received tonight from Kyla Wallstrom from the University of Minnesota, and Julie Dahl from the Minnesota Sleep Society. And so that you have a bigger picture of what is the totality of the conversation as it relates to start times. There's also a spot on our website where the public can reach information, some of which was presented tonight, and the research that goes along with it.
When looking at start time comparisons, we wanted to look at our conference, our athletic conference, the Suburban East Conference, to say, how do these schools, because some of the conversation is around what would the impact be to athletics, and how are schools in our conference, what do they look like compared to us? You can see from this chart that currently, South Washington County, which is East Ridge Park and Woodbury, are the only, is the only school in our conference that has a start time later than 8:30. Everybody else currently mirrors about where we are today. I know that Moundsview, and it was referenced in the documents as part of the handouts earlier, that Moundsview has considered it, to the best of my knowledge, that they are still in the process of considering it. I don't know that it's a foregone conclusion that they're going to be moving in that direction. There are 43 of 325 Minnesota districts that start their high school at 8:30 or later, based on Minnesota Sleep Society of 2016, 2017. So we had originally brought this conversation to a presentation, January 30th, 2018, for discussion. And what was presented at that time was a four-tier system with the middle school and two elementary schools going earlier, the high school starting at 8:20, and then all remaining elementary schools, 9:10, and our charters and non-public schools going anywhere from 9:40 to 9:50. We've heard commentary at Open Forum tonight regarding that. This was merely presented as a starting point for discussion. We did receive feedback even at the January 30th board meeting, that the 8:20 start time might not be desirable, that if we're going to, if we're going to do this, let's shoot for 8:30 or later. So that started adjusting the schedules. We've also received, I would say relatively significant feedback in regards to what is currently our third tier listed here, is our fourth tier for the charter and non-publics, and having conversations with them. And so we have said, okay, that was, that was the start. What would we be looking at as far as a scenario, based on the feedback that we've received from the January 30th meeting with the school board and a conversation with our public? And the way it would look, it would be now, instead of having, and you can see in red would be the changes from the discussion point on January 30th. point on January 30th, instead of having two elementary schools, you would have four. The time would stay the same. And the, the two, at the time of the 30th meeting, we were talking about Lake Elmo and Brookview. And we would also have added Anderson and Lily Lake. That would be the, the four components. Then we would move high school to, high school and the remaining three elementary schools to an 8:35 start with a release of 3:05. And then the charter and non-public schools, and it would vary depending on what building you're in, because you can see from the left side, the current hours, all of, all of the charters and non-publics have a slight variation in, in their start times, in their release times between New Heights, Salem Lutheran, St. Croix Catholic, and St. Croix Prep. And I will say that River Grove has requested transportation from the school district for next year. And so they would be put into this mix sometime for, if we were to be looking at this moving forward for the, the 1920 school year. Potential bus routes, we had had a conversation about what, what would that look like for, for an elementary aged child? And what I did was I took what we currently transport. Now, again, we don't know what those numbers are going to look like two years from now for 1920, but you get an idea of what we'd be looking at if it were to happen today. And currently, in those four schools, we have 1,617 riders and we have 143 students that walk. The longest ride would be approximately 35 minutes. And you can see that would be with Anderson and Lake Elmo. Those students, the first student on the bus would be an estimated six, at 6:43 in the morning, would be about the time that they would be picked, picked up. Lily Lake would be at 6:48 a.m. and then Brookview at 6:53. Again, it comes down to concentration is somewhat would adjust for what would be the earliest pickup time. We did have conversations, and this is, this is a two-part slide of, okay, how dark is it at that time and for how long is it dark? The latest sunrise is at 7:50 a.m., but there is civil twilight. So in the next slide I'll show you, I'll actually just move on right now, is, and this is really hard to see, but the red highlights when the, the days of sunrise after 7:00 a.m. Now, the civil, the civil twilight period, 25, 30 minutes, you can back off these times and say, well, you know, we start to break. It gets a little bit lighter. It's not that true heavy darkness if you allow another 25 to 30 minutes. However, when looking at these days, and when I was counting them and I was going at, based off of this 2017, 2018 school calendar, we have approximately 50 school days in there that would be, that those students would be looking at, that would be the red area highlighted. So I would say somewhere between 35 and 40% of our days, the, the elementary students would, would be before sunrise. School athletics was also talked about during the presentation earlier, the, at the learning session. And with the school day ending at 3:05, it would increase the number of students or estimated impact to the number of students that have to leave early. Currently, and according to Ricky Michael, that these are conservative estimates, but currently for the fall athletes, we have about 160 students. That impacts winter, it's about 180. In spring, it's about 180. And should the start time adjust or releases after 3 o'clock, we would move to fall affecting approximately 500 students, winter affecting approximately 300 students, and spring affecting approximately 500 students. And you can see that sports impacted, in part, some of these are honestly just the ninth grade. They start earlier. They're like a 4 o'clock start now. And so they, those kids that are currently on today's bell schedule don't need to be released from their academic component early, would now need to if that got shifted because that is the time of their competitions. And so I want to say we go from approximately 520 kids to 1,300 kids that it would impact. One point for consideration, and it, if we are to move forward, would also be, you know, how early do they get out? Because if they're currently missing their last hour of the day, is it the last few hours of the day? Lunchtimes could potentially shift later and we could have students being released prior to them actually receiving lunch. So...
As you know, we have had a feedback form online allowing people to provide some comments or share concerns about this. And we have had a lot of feedback already to date. In fact, you've seen several renditions of this. I sent you an initial version on Friday. I sent you an update earlier this week. And then I've just updated the numbers again this morning. So we've had more than 400 unique responses. There are some people who have really wanted to get their point across and they've put it in about 10 or 12 times. So I'm counting just the unique responses here as of this morning. We asked the question just about what did people think about high school start times being later? And there were 55% who liked the idea and 45% of all those responses that didn't. But I am putting an asterisk next to that 55% because a lot of those, in fact, I would say the vast majority of them said, yes, but, I like the idea of high school starting early, but I'm very concerned about the impact on our elementary kids or on the middle school kids, or I have a question about this or that. So I just wanted to make sure you realize that this isn't a, a vote of 55% say, yes, let's do it. It's really, I'm intrigued. I like the research. I like the, the reasoning behind it, but there are a lot of concerns about the impact it would have on the rest of the system. Some of the key concerns, you've already heard about, you've talked about them. I'm sure you've gotten emails about them. The concern about kids getting home later in the evening, especially with the charters and the elementary schools, that would be on the later shift. How this could impact the family time, evening activities. For the high school, the impact on sports as well as student work schedules came up. And the impact on the elementary schools too, there was the concern with the earlier group, if they started early, that that would really be a disruption to family schedules with childcare and the afternoons. So those were some of the top concerns. There's, as you know, I think you've had probably 60 or 70 pages of responses that I'm sure some of you have been reading through and they keep coming in. So I will continue to send that to you as we go through.
So to close the report, in addition to information that was presented tonight before the board meeting that may have sparked different things or additional things for you to weigh, some specific things, we believe at this point, that are key for you as a School Board to weigh moving forward, is the safety of elementary students waiting for school buses in the dark before school, what the impact of that earlier start time will have on middle and the elementary schools, what those, what the impact will be of the elementary buildings having different start times. So remember in the document that was shared on the previous slide, it, right now, it looks like it could impact four of our elementary schools differently. And then the increase of a number of students who are in athletics actually missing school. As Kristin pointed out in our conversations with Ricky Michael, it could be upwards of 500 students that are impacted moving forward if we were to shift back to a 3:05 end time for our high schools, just because of the addition of ninth grade and the other sports that currently aren't impacted and having to leave earlier. And then as you've heard in this presentation, as well as in open forum tonight, there is an impact that needs to be weighed on with regard to our charter schools and our non-public schools. Some additional information and consideration is just a reminder that each bus route is roughly about a $55,000 expense and that adjusting a start time for one tier tends to have an impact on another tier. So you'll notice Kristin pointed out that we had four tiers laid up in that first kind of, here's a rough draft of what it could look like. And then by shifting, we're able to go down to three tiers. And so that expands and contracts depending upon where you put the start times for pickup and drop-off of students, which is dependent upon when you would decide to start the different levels in the system. And so with that, we take questions at this point, but we do not have a recommendation either way.
And before I, I call for questions, I just want to remind the board, this is really the 30,000-foot level to decide whether or not we want to continue this discussion. So I would, I would just let you, you know, formulate your questions based upon, if this is really what you want to go forward, then what kind of questions would you like to have answered? Because I, I know administration is not in a position to answer the minute details of all of this. So I would just remind you that really this is to help you make a decision if this is something you want to go forward with. So with that, I'll open up. Director Pearson.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Kristin, can you go into just briefly what you've already done for transportation as far as who you've talked to to help you figure out different configurations, what different things you've looked at? Have you tried, have you looked at any, you know, we heard earlier about putting district and charter kids on the same bus? What have you done in that regard?
In that regard, have had conversations. I actually spoke directly with Tom Carney from New Heights. And, and he, he had a very similar concern to, you know, the representatives from the audience behind me about what the impact of going so late will do. Given the size of, you know, back to what, what things can you do, given the consideration of how big or how many students we transport, like, you know, there's essentially 1,000 kids at prep. That's a big difference than, you know, 100 or 120 kids that are at New Heights. You know, can we, can we make adjustments where if, like, let's say it would have, if we would have been with what was considered at the November, or, excuse me, the January 30th meeting, could there be a consideration for New Heights back to, you know, kind of riding with us in making that work or adjusting or somehow fitting in it just a little earlier? We've had those conversations. And I would like to say, you know, we, depending on the location of each of the charter, the non-publics and the size, you know, we do try to, we're even in our current situation, you know, if we're, if we're transporting to prep, we're still pulling from 150 square miles to transport to prep. So we have shuttles and we have combinations of schools on different buses. So point being that I have, I specifically spoke with Tom, Roger and I have not been able to connect, but I certainly, he had left his concerns and certainly understand it. And I'm assuming the same would be true for St. Croix Catholic. But when formulating, how does that work, I'm trying to keep it in a parameter of the five-hour window, because that's what we pay for, and how to shift to level us off, if you will. I mean, that's the consideration ultimately.
And have you talked to any outside, I know we, the board got an email from one group offering assistance. Have you talked to any organizations out there?
Uh, yes. Actually, we had had a transportation audit done, I believe it's two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago. And at the time, the, the person who did the transportation audit for us also provided, knew that this was going to eventually be a point of conversation, had also provided essentially kind of eight different scenarios or eight things that if you do this, then maybe do this and make adjustments. And then my team has taken those recommendations and made them apply to, you know, okay, that's big sweeps. Now, what time does the, a bus really pull into the high school and how long does it really take to unload? And then we take those considerations into place. So yes, we have had an outside set of eyes looking at this.
Director Pelletier.
All right. I have more comments and questions at this point, but I guess I'll say, try to make it, you know, the, can you give me some clarity on this, the, the 8:20 versus 8:30 with the high school? And I just, I feel like I've heard a couple of different, of different scenarios on that, that, you know, can you just correct if I'm incorrect? If we were to move the high school to say 8:20, for example, would that make a dramatic improvement to the other schools in the district? Or does it, does that not, is that not really a factor as, as much as you know at this point?
An improvement?
Yeah. So what I'm saying is there are some things that are complete deal breakers for me. And what I'm wondering is, if we're going to have this discussion moving forward, there are some things that just don't sit well with me and I can't support. So I guess what I'm wondering, I'm trying to find out, is it, is it worth us, you know, going down this path if there are some improvements that we just can't make, such as this 10:00 a.m. with the charter schools? You know, that, there are families that, there are families that have, you know, moms and dads who are very heavily involved in our sports, our athletics, and their coaches. And, you know, that, that's one consideration of many, but it's important. So, you know, certain things like that are, are deal breakers for me.
So if you would look at the, the slide that is presented as scenario one, based on the initial feedback, looking at this, if we were, you know, back to, again, taking into consideration not having start times, you know, pushing everybody in that other tier farther back, which we did to, you know, we in part had all of the elementary schools. If we stuck with the four elementary schools and the middle school and just bumped the high school 15, and the other three elementary schools 15 minutes earlier, so we went at 8:20, you're going to bump, everybody else has to shift too. So you're, you would bump your 7:30 start at the middles and the element, those four elementaries to a 7:15. And you would then bump your 9:15 to 9:40 to 9, to 9:25.
Okay. Sorry. One more with that. Yeah. One, I'm done for a little bit. With that point, so with the middle school, is, is this, are, do you feel that we have the opportunity, you have the opportunity to create an option that can, I'm, I'm not in favor of that really early for middle school right now. There are a wide variety of things that I, I struggle with, but that being one of them. So do you think that this is, according to what you know, worthy of, again, potential future conversation, that we can address this with middle, middle school? Or do you think we're not able to hit that task and...
So if we were to look, and, you know, the, the challenge back to, and I, and I don't disagree, it, it is truly coming down to, you know, how do you, how do you handle the priority and the information? If we were to stay within essentially the same structure as what we have, and I, and this is honestly just shooting from the hip. And because, because our entire secondary is essentially, I mean, they're within 10 minutes of each other. So they're 10, you know, you don't, it's the same tier. If you were to move everybody in that same tier, you still have, our challenge lies in that essentially there's not going to be a savings, if you will, right? Because what we're paying today, we're just shifting, we would start maybe the third tier first. And then we'd try to get, you know, what's now tier one to tier two, and we'd move the elementary schools then to the 9:15 to 9:40. So kind of everybody, you know, rotate one is kind of how it would look, where, you know, everybody in tier three would shift to tier one, tier one would move to tier two, tier two would move to tier three. That is, again, and I remember seeing those eight scenarios, that your approach for that would be, would be for the, the sleep component. It would not be for the cost component. Because we would be spending, we would be spending the dollars the way we're spending them today.
Okay.
Director Potachik.
Yeah. The question I have is on the same page. So that's where you are. And I'm, I'm looking at scenario one. What I'm wondering is this, the way those three tiers are right now, the third tier is probably going to be somewhere 9:15 to 9:40, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
With the exception of River Grove, Mike, because they would be the last.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So they would go 9:40?
They would, the way they would run is, and they're designed to run next year, and the conversations we've had with them is, is essentially we need to pick up the south end of the kids, get them to prep. And then we'd run the bus from prep. So whatever prep is, they'd be post-prep to have enough time to get those kids up to River Grove.
Okay. Well, my point is, you've probably got three tiers, because those are probably similar sizes.
Not today, but we, we did until we changed the grade configuration.
Because see, that's, that's what I kind of wonder, how much flexibility? Because we heard the principal talk about even, or, or the teacher as well, at Salem Lutheran, where kids who wanted to participate, in order to do that, they got to free up sometime around 2 o'clock. So that's a big concern. So I'm wondering here, and again, I don't need a lot of specificity as much as to say, hmm, that would bear further research, is could you break down some of that? Could you take some out of tier three, such as Salem, or such as River Grove or whatever, and put them in a different time slot?
Yes, but then something else would need to shift.
Yeah. See, that's, that's what I'm a little bit worried about. I, I'm wondering even because a long time ago, I heard this proposal as part of a package in start times too, is if you singled out one of 8:34 schools and you said, that was going to be a later start, but it's an option and everybody knew it was, and, and what that might yield. And so, for example, any one of those, if you said, okay, this can be a late start, that might free up a different, like, for example, suppose one of the elementaries here, and this is here, and this is just an example, went to, one of those tier one fours went to tier two, would that allow you to move one of the charters to tier one?
Uh...
And I only hope, I, I put that as something to play with.
Yes. What, so then, one, and again, it's, it's the shuffle game, so let's just, if all things are being equal, again, location comes into play and the, and the size of the building.
Yeah.
And so if you were to say, okay, and I'm trying to guess an approximate size of anything, let's say Anderson, let's say Anderson is equivalent to St. Croix Catholic, don't know, but I'm, maybe they're close. If you moved Anderson out, and you moved St. Croix Catholic in, and again, difference with St. Croix Catholic is you're pulling students from the entire district, not just a location. Anderson, you're pulling just from a location, so you're back to ride times and how could that work? Hypothetically, you could say, let's swap one, we move Anderson, you know, down to that final time, but now we have three elementary times. I mean, can, we can work things, but those are, those are what, that's, that's the game, is trying to make that work.
And it may be dead in the water. The last one I'd mentioned there is, is there any desire on prep's part to split their kids in that building?
Go ahead, yeah.
I think I would answer it this way, is, that's the, that, those are kind of the questions that we would answer if we were moving forward, right? Because we haven't dug into that. The one thing that is just a little concerning, standing here, answering those type of questions, is we are kind of getting into the weeds of scenarios. And what I don't want, I don't want the public to take back is, we've got this part figured out, but not this part figured out. The reality is, we're just reporting what the questions were at this point, and what we need you to do as a board is to say to us, when we get to the action item, this is what you want. And then with the guiding change, here's the parameters we want you to live inside of to bring possible scenarios. Because again, my biggest fear would be that we're up here presenting this and people at home are taking it as, well, here's a possible scenario, when without all of the stuff in front of us, we really can't tell you if it will or won't work.
Well, and I, I can't stress that enough, because we're, we're nowhere near that in this. So Director Peterson?
And I was just going to say, when we met as a community engagement working group that we talked about this, and I think we, we started sending our questions to Kristin, here's what we would, or to Krista, here's what we would need to know. I think that's kind of where these questions are more those questions. So I think we all might have some deal breakers, but we might not know where that's going to land until we see what the answers are to some of those questions.
What you have there?
Just, just a couple of comments. I want to clarify, 50 school days, 35% elementary kids and middle school would be getting on the bus before sunrise. Did you say that?
I did say that.
Okay. Second one, in, in sports, kids would be leaving the sports that you named in addition to the other ones, golf, cross-country, track. So we'd lose 500 kids in two of the seasons, about a fifth of the high school.
Yes.
Okay. What, I, I think, Dr. McDowell, I think you mentioned that there would be an impact on the elementary schools to have different start times? Can you give a, what would be an impact?
So what, the biggest impact ends up being with staff development and with our ability when we schedule. We oftentimes share quite a few staff between our elementary schools. And so, is, it would make sense, if, if our schools aren't running at the same time, that is going to greatly constrict what we can do in terms of sharing staff between buildings.
Okay. I figured that's probably what it was. And then my last comment is, I know in the guiding change, it said we aren't going to prioritize charter and non-public. And I guess I, I agree that we shouldn't prioritize. When I think of the time I've lived in Stillwater, though, and I look at the, the list of schools, St. Mike's has been there for I don't know how many years, Salem-Lutheran is close enough where that's been there for a long time, and New Heights, I think, just celebrated a 25th. I mean, we shouldn't, I would say we shouldn't prioritize, but they've been partners with our district for a long time, whether it's lunches, buses, whatever the thing has been. And so I think, for me at least, that's got to be a thing. I'll just say, it's got to be a thing when I consider, is this a good idea or not? So if, if we can't treat them well in tier three, I mean, you know, however we shift tier one and two, then that would be, to Jennifer's point, that would be the deal breaker for me, because I, I don't want to impact those schools.
And I think that would be part of that, that's why the guiding change is listed separately as a decision item for you as a board, is, you know, when that gets presented, that's the time to say, do we like it as it is, or do we want to change it? And then do we like it as we've changed it, if that's the direction you're going to go? That's really why we wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to decide that, because this is a big decision and it impacts quite a few people.
Director Stivlin.
Yeah. So, I'm just going to put this out there. I, I feel like there is obviously some compelling information. We had a great presentation. I've read a lot of the research that's been presented to us from the Minnesota Sleep Society and from, from district information. There's a lot of compelling information here around this topic. I mean, clearly, the, the evidence shows that it's better for kids. I would argue middle school and high school, that's just me, for moving to a later start time. I'm very sensitive about what that means for our, the young elementary-age kids, and the idea of them being outside in the dead of winter, when it's really cold, in the dark, honestly, just terrifies me. And so, that's a deal breaker for me. I have a lot of deal breakers. And I think, I think as compelling as all the information is on this, obviously, the most important thing here, I think, is what you were alluding to, George, that the conversation is where it's at. I mean, this conversation needs to be comprehensive, it needs to be everyone who wants to share some of their thoughts, gets to share their thoughts, it needs to be meaningful, we need to have lots of ideas on the table, all things considered, and really, really spend some time considering all the different possibilities. And we, you know, that's what the problem of, starting to talk about some of these details tonight, I'm already sort of stressed and overwhelmed with this, because that's how complicated it is. I feel like we just went through one of the most difficult years any district could ever go through with the amount of changes we went through last year. I mean, think about that. It was an enormous ordeal for everyone in this district. Every single person was touched by some kind of change, whether it was a classroom change, a building change, the ninth graders in the high school now, the sixth graders, I mean, it was an enormous amount of change. And in some ways, I feel like we, as a community, are still kind of, sort of grappling with that. We're still sort of figuring out what that means and what it feels like. We haven't even gotten to the new normal yet from the changes we did last year, or at the beginning of this year, right? So in some ways, I really feel strongly that we should think about putting this decision off for another year. If we don't do that, I think we should give ourselves at least until, like, December or something, to actually come up with an actual plan. May is absolutely way too fast, in my opinion.
Can I build up?
Yeah.
Chair Lemon for?
Thank you.
Share something? So what we're trying to do is frame this for you. And when you think about the presentations that we had tonight, the research from the two gals who shared, and, and some of our open-form speakers who also shared their opinion and, and their facts, and then we shared the Stillwater specifics, because those were questions that you asked that said, you know, how many kids are impacted, what might this look like? We brought you that information, and then we have the community feedback, and you've seen the themes there. And I think one of the things we all know is, the reason districts grapple with this is just what Sarah had said, there's a lot of research to support it, but there are also a lot of other mitigating factors to think about. And so when you think about what we shared, the number of students who would be impacted, we do have a large number within our district, and the, the gals can speak to this, that are in athletics and activities after school that would be impacted. 500 is a big number. Students being outside earlier, that's also a large number. And so you, as a board, have some options. You can say, nope, we're not ready yet. There are six other school districts who haven't moved this way yet, we want to wait and see who else might. You can say, we're going to educate and do some of the things that our speakers had talked about, what are the things that we can do as a district to help mitigate the effects on our kids and help support our families that way? Or you can say, yes, we definitely want to spend the time, money and resources to do this study for the next year and have a, have a discussion about that. In that case, then you would go on to your guiding change and have some of those pieces put in the guiding change. But we don't want you to spend time on that if you think right now is just, to Sarah's point, not really the time to do this.
Well, and I think that's a good jumping off, and I'd like to move to the action item. The first one is the directive, develop a start time proposal. Again, you know, what, what we're saying here is, do we want to go down this road, as Superintendent Pontrelli indicated? And I will give everyone an opportunity. I, I would like to start. I, I, I think that there are too many other things that we need to accomplish before we take this on. I, I don't want to drop the ball, though, because I think that the, and as we've indicated, the studies, you know, and I, I agree that some studies say some things and you can take them whatever. But I do think that sleep is important. I think there are things that we can educate our parents on. I think that we should do that. I think it's, you know, a public service to them. And, you know, we should educate them on the use of electronic devices. There are ways to turn off the blue light on a lot of these devices. So if, if your son or daughter wants to text at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, you know, there are ways that you can do that. I don't find that something, yeah, that you should do. But, you know, it sounds like there are people out there who do do that. So I think we can have a discussion about homework. But I, I think at this point, I would like to focus our time, energy and our resources on other things. We've heard from speakers tonight that there are issues in this district that deserve our time and energy to focus on. So I, I think that's where I'm at with this. Director Loughlin.
So, and I mentioned this earlier when our, after our presentation, or the presenters had spoken, I think that I have some, some real questions, just looking at this through an equity lens, in terms of the impact to various parts of our communities. I also am very mindful, you know, as I was doing the research and, and considering this, that we, we do have finite resources in terms of time, money and energy, and allowing Superintendent Pontrelli and her team to be able to focus on some of the continued implementation and some of the things that Director Stivlin had, had noted before, and being able to, especially as we embark also on the strategic plan, and being able to be really thoughtful. And for me, it's more about depth and, than it is breadth, and, and being able to really be mindful and thoughtful about where we are allocating our resources. So I agree with Chair Lehman, I, I do not support moving forward with this right now. I just don't, I just have too many concerns in terms of the impact to, to many of our community members.
Director Pelletier.
This is, this is tough for me. I, you know, as a mother of three myself, I, I've seen, you know, my three of them getting up at the crack of dawn at 5:00 AM, and I'm not a morning person, so it's not enjoyable for me with, at all. But, you know, move on to middle school, and I see, you know, these kids need to sleep. I look at high school, and I have kids in AP classes, and it's stressful for them. And the mental health component is real and it matters. And, you know, this is tough. And, you know, I, I like the, I really like the idea of the community and of the group, of assembling a group of citizens from a wide variety of, you know, backgrounds and schools and, and, you know, give the power to the public with regards to this and see, you know, see if they can address it. On the flip side, we look at 500, you know, to Director Heppner's point, 500 athletes? That's a lot. You know, the little kids, you know, in the dark. And I feel like, to the point, you know, at the hearing tonight, there are some real issues right now going in our, going on in our schools right now. Anderson Elementary being one of them, variety of other, a variety of other issues that, as much as it, it's tough for me to say this, I think, right now, in this space and time, I think we need, we've got some in-house work to take on, and I think that needs to take precedence over this at this point. I'm really hoping that we can address this, however, in, in the, in some form going forward, because it's, it is important to me to have the discussion, to address various pros and cons. But again, I think we've got some work to do. We've got to clean up our shop, and so I guess I'm, I'm leaning towards not, not moving forward at this point.
Director Peterson?
I would agree with that, but I don't want us to, like, let it die forever. And I really don't want these other things to die, this getting kids to bed earlier and getting, educating about devices and all the other things that we heard tonight. I really don't want us to, like, put this to rest and all of that to rest. I want us to really hit that with, with our schools and our kids and just educating people about the benefits. And we learned a lot about mental health, and that will help in our schools, too.
Is that something that the community engagement group could continue working?
I just was going to say.
The dream team.
And it sounds like you have to label this start times in order to get the public to come, so. Director Stivlin?
Well, you just said what I was going to say, that maybe this is something we would like to actually convene a community-led group that would help gather the information, help, you know, create the opportunities for feed, you know, for community conversation and explore what some of those different options are and start to pull some of the different pieces and really, you know, keep it going. But give ourselves like a year before we even kind of get to a more, to a more clear decision, at least a year, if not more.
What I hear my colleagues saying, and I agree with it, is delay. On the other hand, you want a study committee, which you'll call the Start Committee, but it's really sleep deprivation prevention. And, and I concur with that. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think with the immense amount of work already, and I happen to believe that, as Sarah stated much, much better than I could, of what's going on, I, I think this has to be moved back further in the back burner.
Director Heppner, anything?
Yeah, I have no, everything, everybody said makes sense to me. There is a limited amount of time, of money and of resources, and given everything that's on the administration's plate, I have no problem putting this off.
Well, and I think to Mike's point, and he's always raised this, you know, we've heard from our community, and again, as you say so eloquently a lot of times, Mike, we have a lot of educated people in this community that can help us with this, and, and it's important to engage them. So I, I agree, I don't want this to be lost in the shuffle. And, you know, again, probably if Superintendent Pontrelli can make a mental note to bring it up again in a year and see, see where it goes, then that would be good. I don't...
Just before you move, though, I, I think we have to recognize that people have done a lot of work already.
Yeah, no.
And our appreciation. But, but sometimes we need that to go on as well.
Yeah.
Just like I think part of what was recommended here is for the community engagement, and, and Chris and I emailed back and forth a little bit. I'd still like to look at, what is it, 56 pages of, of stuff?
And more, because they were posting.
Yeah. And, and leave it open, but I mean, that's still valuable information, and there are valuable trends in there. I haven't personally completely digested it, but I've gotten a big flavor.
Maybe some of those people might want to be on the committee.
So we could, sorry. I was just going to say, we can make a motion to deny this action item at this point, but to direct the community engagement group to start having preliminary discussions about creating a subcommittee of some sort.
Was that your motion?
That'll be my motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion with regards to this? Thank you again, everybody, for this healthy discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right. That negates, then, the necessity for action item B, and so we will move on to the board report. For the chair's report tonight, I'm going to For the chair's report tonight, I'm going to kind of combine mine. I handed out everyone at their place a postcard for the partnership party. Again, the partnership plan is the fundraising arm for our district. In fact, one of the items I want to speak about is the partnership awards that were handed out, but the event is scheduled for Friday, April 20th. It will start at 5:30. It's at the JX Event Venue, so it's a new location, a new month, a new day, and even more fun, as the plan says, as the postcard says. So I encourage the community to go to the partnership website. You can buy your tickets online there. I encourage the board to do so as well, because it is a great event, and want to publicize that, so thank you to the partnership for that. As I indicated, the partnership awarded their annual awards for 2017-18. They are Julie Haddad, a teacher at Brookview Elementary, Stan Spain, special education teacher at Lily Lake, Glenn Betcher, science and agricultural teacher at Stillwater Area High School, Nicole Malone, the math teacher at Stillwater Middle School, Tim Foster, retired sixth-grade teacher, Jeff Ranta, retired biology and astronomer teacher, Terry Rendazzo, who works at the Early Childhood Family Center, and Tate Chobeline, a behavior specialist for all districts. There'll be a banquet to honor these individuals on Monday, April 2nd, if the board is interested, and we recognize, and the partnership recognizes and honors those teachers for their contributions to the district, so. And I know some of you are going to touch upon, some of us attended the St. Croix Valley Area Learning Center mid-year graduation ceremony, very moving ceremony. It's important for us and also the community to understand that there are some non-traditional students who graduate from our school district, and it's important that we recognize their achievement and their hard work to get to that point. And their motto for 2018 was, "We are not alone," and I'll be happy to share the program. They also did kind of like a hand thing that they made with regards to wood, saying, "St. Croix Valley ALC, keep growing, we are not alone, 2017, 2018." I also wanted to share Sue Gilzdorf, who is the Stillwater Middle Vocal Music Teacher, said, "The choir clinic, they're having a choir clinic next week on March 12th and 13th. They're welcoming Dr. Andre Haywood to Stillwater Middle School to work with the eighth-grade choir for two days. Dr. Haywood is the conductor of the St. John's Boys Choir in Collegeville, Minnesota, and is a highly sought-after conductor and clinician. The two-day rehearse, days of rehearsal will culminate with a concert in the auditorium at Stillwater Middle School on Tuesday evening, March 13th. The Stillwater Choir from Stillwater Area High School will be our guest artists for this concert, and the evening will conclude with two mass choir pieces with all choirs singing together. The choir begins at 8:00 p.m. That's open to the public and to the board." So again, recognizing not only academics, but also the arts. And then some of us attended the MSBA Leadership Workshop, where we gained helpful insight into running our school board and got information. So that's all I have, and board member reports? Who'd like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay. Director Stivlin.
So I just have one, actually, two things. I have, we have started last June, May, sometime, talking about mental health awareness and looking at how we can improve our response and approaches that we have in our schools for promoting mental health, and those conversations have continued to go, they've continued to grow. We have some phenomenal leadership from some of our community partners, such as Youth Service Bureau, Family Means, Canvas Health, Lakeview Hospital, Lakeview Foundation, and these are really incredibly talented people who, some of them work with our students on a, you know, case-by-case basis. They really know what's going on, and they can really help guide us in improving our approaches to mental health. And so as it's moved forward, we've kind of divided into two different areas. This is just a little background. Awareness and prevention of mental health issues, and then support in crisis. So you have kind of both sides of wherever a person might be on the continuum of need. And I happen to be on the Mental Health Awareness and Prevention Group, and we met this past week, and I just wanted to share that where we're kind of leaning towards is three key approaches that we're going to be trying to grow and develop. One is to help find support and training and professional development for teachers and staff throughout K-12, throughout the buildings, to improve the availability of parent resources, so that parents can know how to be supportive and help their children and respond to whatever might be happening in their home, and then also to just simply reduce the stigma around mental health. This is such a huge issue, and it's just widely understood that we don't really know how to talk about mental health in a way that is often, sometimes, there is a stigma there, and we don't know how to talk about it. We feel embarrassed or something, and we shouldn't. We should be open and comfortable talking about these things. So those are the three key areas we're going to try and focus on. And so in relation to the second point there, the significant parent resources, I want to tell about two different things. One is I learned about, or we learned about, a Minnesota-based organization that has created a web-based resource, which is phenomenal. I went and checked it out to see how it actually works. It's called FastTrackerMinnesota.org. So it's just, I think if you just Google, like, FastTracker Minnesota, you would get it. And this is basically a website. You can put in your area of need, whether it's, you know, anxiety, or, I just put in anxiety, and then your location, and, I don't know, some other basic, really basic information, and then a page will pull up, and resources, people you can call to make an appointment, events, local agencies that are available. I mean, it was just unbelievable how many resources there were, just right there at your fingertips. And so I was talking with Chris earlier, where I think they're working on trying to get that link on our school district webpage, so that people can find that, but just to be able to get that information out tonight, FastTrackerMinnesota.org, it's phenomenal, check it out. And then the other thing I was going to mention is that next week, in the area more related to mental health, but more in the line of chemical awareness, the high school is going to be hosting an event called the Top Secret Project. This is a parents-only event, and it is an opportunity for parents to come and learn about what's out there. If you've heard about vaping, if you want to know more about where things are at with marijuana, they're going to cover all of the different chemicals, substance abuse issues. They're going to answer your questions. This is put on by Hazleton. It's been around for a long time. It's really actually quite fun and very informative, and I've heard it's amazing, and I would encourage you to go. It's next week, March 14th, at 6:30 p.m. at the high school, and that's it.
Thank you for sharing. Director Hepner.
Two things. I also attended that ALC graduation, and just a shout-out to Principal Mary Teichu. I know she kind of put most of that together, a very nice program. Kids seemed obviously happy to get their recognition and their diplomas, and to her administrative assistant, Susie Stewart, as well. And then board members should have the EMed February Board Meeting Minutes. Just two quick things. Stillwater's resolution of intent to withdraw from EMed was accepted, and Dr. Lubke, the executive director, indicated her intention to retire on June 30th, 2019, when her contract expires. So the board asked our board chair, Ellen Fahey, from White Bear Lake, to contact Ken LaCroix to work with us on a search for candidates, and so Mr. LaCroix has been retained by the board, and he will be helping us. We'd like to get somebody in place by the first of the year to work with Dr. Lubke before they take over, I guess. That's it.
Thank you. Director Pearson?
Sarah kind of stole my thunder, but I'm going to say a little more about this Top Secret Project, just because you need to get tickets. So go to YSB.net. Youth Service Bureau is another partner that's working with this, and just kudos to all these organizations that do really great work for us. And I'm just going to read the first paragraph. "It's free presentation for adults only, designed to help parents recognize unfamiliar hazards of teenagers that may be hiding in their rooms. Signs of drug and alcohol use, eating disorders, self-harm, and criminal activity." So I'm sure it's got great information, and just would encourage you to attend. I can't, but I'm sending my husband against his will. And then the other thing, I just went to Officers Training also, and I typed up some notes that I'll send, just what I learned from that.
Thank you for sharing. Director Pelletier.
All right, so just thanks for the comments on the mental health. I have had a few conversations with parents, and one of them struck me that a mom that's heavily involved, and she said, you know, "Where are the other parents?" And, you know, you try, and you do what you do, and so I guess I'd like to just, you know, make a little gentle plea that, you know, it's the parents, it's the families that are directly affected by this, and we need your voice. We need you to be there as much as you can, or at least to email us, or whatever it is, because, you know, you guys are, our families are on the front lines of this, so just the hope that we can, you know, continue to outreach to the community to get parents involved in that juncture. AMSD, all right, so this was my first meeting with AMSD as the liaison this year, and our, now Mike is going to know this, but our guest speakers were, I was a Wayzata area Republican representative, I can't remember his name, Anderson is his last name, as well as our newly-elected representative, Carla Bingham, and she does have a portion of 834, so it was really nice to have the opportunity to meet her and hear from them and discuss, you know, issues with them. My takeaway from this meeting is that I was amazed by it, because unfunded mandates and the cross-subsidy situation continue to be real problems that are affecting districts across the state. I was very thankful that there were so many people who spoke up passionately about the topic, and it's not even a topic that you just casually talk about. It's a real issue, and we need to really rally around this, because it affects our kids and the funding for our kids. And in fact, one of the speakers was from the St. Cloud area. He was a school board member, and he got up, and he was very passionate, and he said, you know, "This is pitting students against each other, and that's not okay." And he said, "It's crippling our district, and it's crippling many districts." So we need to, you know, he urged the people in the room, and I'd like to urge us all to kind of pay attention to this issue and understand how it affects our kids, and kind of, you know what, contact our representatives, and just be informed about it, and that's it.
Great, thank you. Director Loughlin.
Just one note, continuing on the theme of the mental health awareness, that, and I believe we'll already be at the Capitol with C, but the, NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Health, the Minnesota chapter, is having Mental Health Day at the Capitol on March 15th, so I'm wondering if there might be an opportunity there for us to have a presence in that realm as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Good point.
And that's it.
Good, thank you.
Couple things I want to do. One, I'm going to ask Barb to assist me a little bit. I think everybody knows what this is, or at least I hope you do. This is the board's platform for legislation, and one of those in particular has to do with the special education cross-subsidy. In other words, the amount that's not paid by the state or the federal government, and what we want is for the state to increase the state's share of special education funding. So Barbara's going to click on a video that Denise and Jennifer and I saw at AMSD, and it's much briefer than I am. It's about a minute and a half. Loading takes a long time.
It's on my screen. I don't know.
Okay, while we're waiting, and I'll stop if it comes on, because I want to mention about three or four other things that are going on with the legislative leadership, and that is this. As Paula mentioned, on March 15th, which is a Thursday, we are sending a delegation of board administration, teachers, and parents to meet with six of our local legislators individually, and that will begin at about 9:30 in the Senate Building and end approximately at 2:00. It's an open meeting, so anyone is eligible who wants to come there and sit in on that as well. Also, I want to mention, on Monday, March 19th, is the Minnesota School Boards Association at the Capitol Day, and that's open to any board members who want to attend. I think all of you got that information, but if you want to attend, you do need to preregister and contact me if you want any additional information on that. And then a third date that's important legislatively is that board members, there's a meeting on Wednesday, March 25th. It's called C's Regional Meeting, and it's held at their offices in St. Paul for two hours. It goes from 9:30 to 11:30, and we'll have an opportunity to meet with the executive director, one-on-one, with other people from our region, and also with Deb Griffith. Is it ready to go?
It is.
Okay. This is a great combination.
Yeah. It's really good.
Put this together. Oh, yes. 700 million. Wow. I don't know if I can do that. I don't know if I can.
It has stopped on us.
Okay. We can post it online as well.
And it is on AMSD.org.
Yes.
That's there along if any community members...
And that's really the backdrop for Jennifer's comments on pitting students against students or programs against programs.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any working board member, working group reports? Any workers?
It's very quick. The Community Engagement Team, and I'm going to call it the three Ps, Potachik, Pearson, Pelletier, but we, as you know, we met, and I just want to comment that the world's best, the world's best workforce advisory committee that we're trying to, you know, community outreach to get people to sign up and apply for that, that application is still available online at StillwaterSchools.org. It's right on the main page. We have, currently have, I believe, over 30 applicants so far, so it's very, very good. It's strong, it's robust, but we'd like to see more. So if you have interest, just go right to the main page of Stillwater, and it's a quick and easy application process. That's it.
The Policy Working Group met, had cookies at our meeting, and we got through 201, 202, 203, and we're meeting again in March 27th from 2:00 to 4:00. We get right on task and get our work done.
That's impressive.
Thank you. All right, oh, Director Loughlin.
Yes, thank you. So the Finance Working Group, we met the morning of February 26th. Just a reminder that each board member has a responsibility, please, to, I emailed Director Holheisel to set up a time, just so that we can have some guidance and direction. We were charged to come up with an agenda. We were charged to come up with an agenda for our working group, the finance meeting, which will be on Wednesday, March 28th, for 90 minutes. And we need some clarity and direction and, from each of you, to how to inform what the content of that meeting is going to be so that we can really winnow it down and use our time efficiently and effectively with regards to the budget. So just a reminder to please do that.
Thank you. So before we adjourn, I want to remind the community that we have two learning sessions coming up. As Director Loughlin indicated, we're having a budgeting learning session on Wednesday, March 28th, starts at 6:00 PM at Central Services. We're gonna talk about budgeting, some of the issues that will be, will be coming up regarding the budget. So encourage the public to attend. And then also, on, before the March 29th School Board Meeting, at 4:30, we'll begin to have another learning session to discuss the literacy and the literacy curriculum adoption that we'll be looking at. What's that?
That will be here.
Yes. And that will be here at City Hall, again, to discuss the literacy and curriculum budget purchase. That will be on the agenda that night. One of the other things I learned at the School Board Meeting, I do not need a motion to adjourn, so we are adjourned.